Okay, I'd like to call the Service Committee meeting together at 6:00 PM. Members present are Steve Young, Brenton Potter, and myself as chair. Ciaran Sherrick is absent. Is there anybody from the public who would like to participate, say something for the Service Committee? Seeing none, we'll take, we'll have a, I'll have our approval of the minutes from the August 24th regular Service Committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Mr. Young and a second from Mr. Potter. Any more discussion on that? Seeing none, all vote usual, usual sign. Motion carries. Okay, open projects. I turn the open projects list to, over to Miranda, and she's going to update that for us. What I had at our last meeting, we took out a lot of stuff, so she's going to update it, and we'll be ready to attack what we got on that by our next Service Committee. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that being done, any more, anybody from the public want to talk? If not, I will adjourn this meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, Vicki, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. This is concerning the 2024 OPWC project. If you'll remember, the Service Safety Director requested in his July 31st, '23 report for the project to be referred to the Finance Committee only. As was discussed at the August 24th, '23 Service Committee meeting, the project also needs to be referred to Service Committee, and the referral was not done at this last council meeting.
We actually just discussed it with Miranda, and it's on the schedule for the next council.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
Yeah, I've actually read your report, I was reading through this, and I'm like, we forgot this, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Vicki. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting at 6:03.
Health and Safety Committee, September 7th, 2023.
Call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Members present are Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, chair. Any public participation for Health and Safety?
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. At the July 18th, '23 council meeting, City Resident Pam Dunn asked the council to opt out of the firework rule. The matter was referred to the Health and Safety Committee on July 18th, '23. Meyer spoke at the July 20th, '23 Health and Safety Committee and stated, "We had a speaker on Tuesday that wanted us to address fireworks. I did look, we don't really have anything in the codified ordinances. The fireworks are going to fall under the noise ordinance, and that's really the only thing I could find. The rest of it falls under the Ohio Revised Code on the fireworks. Need to look at the Ohio Revised Code again." I went ahead and did some research, and I secured a copy of legislation from the City of Columbus, who opted out of House Bill 172 entirely. And House Bill 172 allows the Ohioans to legally set off consumer-grade fireworks on private property. However, if I'm understanding Mrs. Dunn correctly, and in reading the minutes, she's concerned about the number of days that the fireworks can be set off. There are 20 days established in House Bill 172 where citizens are allowed in Ohio to set off fireworks. So I went ahead and secured a copy of the legislation from City of Lorain, who opted out of certain days that fireworks can be set off per House Bill 172. So I didn't know if the Health and Safety Committee would like a copy of those two pieces. Of course, the one, I don't think is what Mrs. Dunn is looking at. She's just wanting to cut down the, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I would like if you could forward that on, and we'll put that on our next agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, great. So do I want me to just go ahead and email it to you then, Kevin?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Vicki.
Yeah, I've got a comment on that, and, and that's great, and I understand, but, I mean, we've got one, nothing against Mrs. Dunn, but we've got one person that doesn't like it. And the other issue is if it's, she's, I think she was complaining about it was the days that weren't in the, in that legislation, yeah. And I know, they do it, they do it in my neighborhood, they do it in every neighborhood, but I don't know if that's something we can address. I think that's more, if the police department wants to do something about it, they'll have to do something about it.
Well, that's why we can talk about it in committee and get their involvement.
Right, right, so I just want to, you know, we're not going to, can't say, make the, we can't make the police officers go out and hunt these people down, I guess, is.
Um, the City of Lorain, which again opted out of certain days for fireworks to be set off, in their legislation, you will find that they have a whereas clause where they did a community survey regarding the fireworks to, and they had 763 resident respondents, so it wasn't just like council. They looked at the public to.
Right, well, that's something we would need to do, you know.
Right, right.
I mean, so many times we have one person, we had a gentleman come up the other day about, and I definitely agree with him that, that dilapidated houses in Bussaras are an issue, but we had one person come up and talk about his neighborhood, you know, but that doesn't entirely mean that council should jump on that, you know what I'm saying? I mean, and I'm not, I'm not, nothing against you or nothing against Mrs. Dunn or the gentleman that came up about the houses. There's a lot to do, there's a lot that we have to pass, and, and it's great making us aware of it, but I don't know how much we can do about fireworks, you know, looking at the big picture, you know, I'm looking at, let's get some more money in here, let's pay our bills, let's, you know, keep the fire, you know, and I guess fireworks is just not at the top of my priorities, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You said they opted out of days, was it, did they opt out of days within that set days, like?
Right, right.
Did you pick days out?
Right, of the 20 days that House Bill 172 allows, they opted out of certain days, yes, in their legislation.
They just didn't shrink it down further, they just picked what they wanted out of?
Right, they picked the days that House Bill 172 allows you to set off fireworks, and they said, "These are the days that we want to be able to set off out of those that..."
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and like I'm saying, we can't even keep, we've got two-hour parking throughout downtown, we can't, we don't have officers that enforce that, so, you know, nothing against the officers, nothing against the administration, but we can't enforce a two-hour parking throughout the city. I don't know how we're going to do fireworks, so that's my only comment.
Any other public participation? All right, you have in front of you the minutes from the August 24th regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve those.
A second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball and a second by Mr. Young. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries. Tuesday, we were read that there's a liquor permit request for Sujo LLC, 642 Woodlon Avenue, first floor and patio. I'm assuming this is just a transfer of ownership or a new LLC name for the Ren's Nest. I called Chief Ostenheimer, who had no issues, and I spoke with Mr. Gerner, who has no issues, so we as a committee just need to decide if we want to request a hearing or bypass a hearing.
I don't request a hearing.
I don't either.
Yes, all right. So you can notify them that we do not request a hearing. All right, on DORA. I met with Mr. Patrick from the chamber, just pulling something out here to share. The signage that is in the packet, Vicki, this will be of interest to you, is what they're using. So the only addition is they added the Chamber of Commerce logo to the bottom, which in the application only had the City of Bussaras logo, so it is verbatim from the packet. I also gave him a copy of the actual application, which he had not had, so he's got that now. One of the things he's going to do, the signs have been ordered through Vassals, he assumes they're going to be ready very quickly. Once they get them up, if there's any deviation from what's in the packet, he's going to give us a list so that we can do as we discuss and just go and make a resolution that procedurally changes what that was. So I think the signage issue now finally is, is actually going somewhere and going to be taken care of. They're 18 inches tall by 12 inches wide. And then he spoke with me a little bit about their plans for the cups. He's going to meet with, I guess he's going to try to hold a meeting for all of the permit holders.
Excuse me, how tall or what size did you say you ordered?
18 by 12. 18 tall by 12 wide is what this says here.
Because he'd given me 6 by 12 as the measurement of the sign, but it's 18 by 12, that's what he said.
That's, he brought this from Vassals, and it says 18 tall, 12 wide.
Great. Would you be able to send it and email that to me? Thank you.
He said he was going to try to have a meeting, he's, like we mentioned the other night, he's kind of just taking this on and trying to figure everything out and learn as he goes, but he has the same idea, he wants to do everything according to the, to the letter of the law, to make sure that he's doing everything correctly. So he said that he was going to have a meeting with the permit holders within the DORA area to do over the procedures about the cups and so on and so forth, so. He wasn't able to be here tonight because he has to work. So is there any other questions, comments, concerns?
So the modifications that we're going to do to the DORA agreement, or not agreement, application, will hold off on those until we hear back from Mr. Patrick as to whether there's any deviation or?
Yeah, you know, for instance, I think it says where the signs are going to be.
Right.
If they get out there and say, okay, there's not a good location to put the sign, we're going to move it over here type thing, I think we can go back and, because my guess is when that was done, that probably was not, that was done sitting at a computer, that probably wasn't done by somebody who was out walking and said, oh, we can put one here, there's a sign or a proper sign or a proper place there, so that makes sense, I think, to me to, to let him figure out where they're all going to go and then notate.
And, I was hoping the mayor would be here, but I do want to make this comment. I want to correct a statement that Mayor Reeser made at the September 5th, '23 council meeting concerning the DORA application. At that meeting, and in response to my statement that the mayor brought the application to City Council, he said he didn't bring the application to council, that it was brought by the partnership and the Chamber of Commerce. In my review of page one of the application, it states the following. "The mayor respectfully submits the following application to the Bussaras City Council to approve and enact the downtown Bussaras designated outdoor refreshment area in accordance to Ohio Revised Code 4301.82, submitted to Bussaras City Council on January 25th, 2022, and modified on April 13, 2022, signed on January 25th, 2022 by Mayor Jeff Reeser."
Dooley noted.
Can you see it right there?
Yep.
The big thing I want to point out is that per Ohio Revised Code Section 4301.82, it states it is the executive officer of a municipal corporation, which in our case is Mayor Reeser, that files a DORA application with the legislative authority. So in other words, I don't care who prepared the application, he had the ability to not submit it to you folks, and there would be no DORA.
Correct.
So I just wanted to correct his statement.
Dooley noted on the record.
Thank you.
All right, I have some. Natalie Norman, 219 and 1/2 South Sandusky Avenue. Who oversees DORA besides, I mean, who?
It's a good question.
Yeah.
Chamber Commerce.
Okay, so they have never been able to provide me with cups, ever. I always had to go through the partnership, the chamber never gave me cups.
Yeah.
Always through the partnership, who oversees the cups when they run out? And you have bars putting DORA on cups, stickers, that's, that's already happened.
Yeah, so from talking to Mr. Patrick, I guess the history, you know, the chamber and partnership kind of were a little bit side by side and maybe a little bit back and forth from when this started.
I've never seen that, but.
And, and then they, they both kind of got out of, the two people from each organization both left their jobs. So Mr. Patrick, when he learned that the previous chamber director had said that she didn't want to deal with this anymore, was, he didn't know anything about that, and so when Mr. Reeser spoke with him, he says, "Oh, absolutely, this belongs in the chamber, we want it," so they've gladly taken it back in. He says he's handling all of that going forward as far as cups go.
All right, so before, this is whenever DORA first started, there were bars putting on glasses, stickers that said DORA. Because somebody came into our store and they said, "Oh, you finally have official glasses." I said, "I've always had official glasses." That's not what's been happening.
Gotcha.
So who oversees that? The police department?
Yeah, and in, in between, I don't know, in between monitoring two-hour parking, they'll check on that, too.
It's been a joke, that's what I'm saying. DORA's been a joke.
I know.
Nobody's watching it, nobody cares.
Parking downtown's been a joke, and there's a lot of stuff that's been a joke around.
Nobody cares. I have people come in and buy six-packs from me.
And put stickers on them and walk out?
No, no, then they come back in and, "I need a DORA cup." I'm like, "Oh, no, no, that's not how that works." No, 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 but it's being allowed, so. Somebody's giving them cups.
Well, and the.
It's an ultimate authority over DORA, addressed to the city.
Yeah.
I mean, we approve it, we manage it, so I think that those are valid things.
Yeah.
That you could bring to the council. I mean, I don't know that these guys have ever heard the horror stories of that shit.
Oh, it's been, it's been a freak show, yeah, yeah.
No, I don't know what would keep anyone from going up.
Or they'd ask me for ice. "Well, you sold us warm beer, so now we need ice. Go across the street, these folks."
Yeah, I don't know what would stop anyone.
Does the penalty phase of that, you know, does that follow to the police department or does that default to the Division of Liquor Control?
Liquor Control does not oversee it, it's the police department, yeah. Only the licensed bars are liquor control. I can answer your question, but yeah, yeah, but it's not been, it's not been a good situation.
So.
I'm just telling you.
Yeah, no, it's good stuff to know.
To put it out there, because I'm almost out of cups, but I don't really care.
Do you have Mr. Patrick's contact information?
I have, I know how to find him.
Yeah, I'll just walk next door.
Yes, but it's just, yeah. So, you know, first we were supposed to go to the city, or, you know, before partnership, and I used to go in, and no one could help you unless the partnership was there, and then I got the letter for the city, and now.
It all changed as fast as a fast-paced task match, for sure.
Yeah, and some of the bars on your list are not actually participating in DORA, so you might have to get that changed, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll convey all that to Mr. Patrick, because I think that's going to fall back to him to kind of.
Because all of our liquor licenses were turned in, no one was asked, but all of our liquor licenses were turned in. Only a few asked to be a part of DORA once they were outside of the limits, and that was changed, but.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, I'll convey all that to him, and I would anticipate, like he said, he was going to try to have a get-together with everybody to make sure everybody's on the same page.
It's not going to happen, but yeah.
I'm the messenger.
Uh, no, it seems to be.
All right, thank you, Natalie. Anybody else have anything on DORA before we move on? All right, open projects. On the list of open projects for health and safety, I was talking to Miranda, and what I think may have happened, I know we've done this in the past, I think we may have gotten ahold of an older list here, some of it's we've probably removed at other times, I think it's easier just to say the things that I'm recommending we leave on here. Nothing on page one, I think everything on the first page can come off.
I agree.
On the second page, I would leave the occupancy permits, the International Property Maintenance Code, downtown traffic signal, and fire department staffing. I would leave those four items on page two.
Run, run that by me again, I'm.
Occupancy permits, which is the second one down.
Right.
International Property Maintenance Code, which is the third.
Right.
Downtown traffic signal timing, which is the fourth, and fire department staffing, which is the eighth, only because the safer grant is still hanging out there.
Safer grant, right. Well, I don't know about the timing on the, how many, how many years have we?
Well, I know that there's still complaints about it, that's why I thought we'd leave it in there, so we can still talk about it if, I mean, I.
That's fine.
If we remove it and somebody else wants to come and complain about it, we have to refer it again.
That's.
It's still an issue, I think that, to me, that makes it an open project.
Right, is the tree ordinance, is that a done deal?
Yep.
Okay, so I, that was a question I had. All right, yeah, well, yeah, that one little thing isn't going to matter, but.
And then on the third page, the only two that I would still leave on is rental property safety regulations and rental property registration, which are the first and the fourth ones, and everything else I think could also be removed. I'll entertain your all's suggestions, thoughts, or ideas.
Did we get the, is the taxicab thing completed now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I saw a taxicab today, but I don't know, it didn't look any different than last time I saw it, but anyway.
What you got there, I agree with what you have, that sounds.
Yeah, and I don't know what the railroad bridges thing is, and I stoked up.
That was something that Ms. Sherrick referred back in 2022, and I'm not sure what her issue with the bridges was. I know that it was probably about the, the appearance of them and painting them, which I know that the mayor said that we aren't allowed to do anything on the railroad, has to do at all, and it's.
And what about the concealed carry? That was another question.
Uh, that was when somebody had asked about letting concealed carry within this building.
Oh, okay.
And we did, the police chief spoke on that topic.
Okay, I'm good. I want to make sure we, I covered them all, so.
Mr. Young.
I'm trying to do my due diligence here.
Now, there's a lot going on here, but now.
Yeah, a lot of old stuff.
Yeah.
Some of it dated back to 2012, 2013.
Yeah.
All right, so everybody's in agreement that those are good to leave and that the rest can be removed? I'll keep this here for you, so you have.
You have just a tiny list now.
Yeah, it'll be a lot easier to manage going forward, that's for sure.
Right.
All right, is there any other public participation? Oh, hold on, I'm not done yet. I've got something else that was referred that I wanted to bring up. The question was brought up about feral cats, and I've done some research, there's a couple of municipalities in Ohio that have criminalized the feeding of feral cats. I think that's a horrible idea, and I don't want to ever see that happen, because that is inhumane, whether the cat's causing a problem or not, it's still a domesticated living animal. But really, I went and met with two of the local veterinarians, and they both agree that the best option is if we can try to figure out a way to do what's called a TNR trap, neuter, and release. And it works if you have somebody that can do the catching, and that's the problem, that we don't have, you know, the employee in the city to go out and capture them. If you allow just anybody from the public to do that, then, you know, Mr. McKeever could bring this cat in and say, hey, here's this, this cat that's been wandering around the neighborhood, let the city pay you $40 to get it neutered, and then, hey, I'll take my cat back home with me now. You know, that fear exists, that people would, would use it for the wrong reasons. And so they both agreed that the best way to do that is if the city were able, so I think that's almost something we have to look at, you know, when we start looking at budgets, is there, is there somebody in some department that can do that two days a month? I don't know the answer to that, the administration would have to kind of answer that. But she said it would be about $40 to $45 per cat for them to do that, and then they mark them either with clipping their ear or putting a tattoo on them that, so that way if they're brought back in again, they know that surgery has already been completed. And they do say that they target the high areas, and we know that there's three or four different areas in town. In fact, two of the vets were telling me where some of the high areas of town, where there's a lot of feral cat activity. And, you know, after a couple of months, they said that they do see a lot of progress because they're going to stop procreating and, you know, the population is going to diminish over just its natural course. So that's kind of where that's at right now, unless, you know, the three of you have any other suggestions, or Mr. Gerner, if you have anything else to add, I think, you know, that's probably a budgetary manpower type of question for the administration.
Is that on the list? Is that on the open projects?
No, and that's the funny thing, I was going to say, I think we need to go back through anything that was referred here in the last six months and make sure, because that was one that I know was not on there, so.
I know that was referred, yeah.
So we probably need to look back through our referral sheets and add things along like that, so. I wanted to touch on that, though, because we had somebody come and speak on it, and I had done some research.
I think it'd be great if you could get the, the information to the administration so they can do a, do some figuring on what the actual cost would be for.
Right.
Staffing and equipment.
Again, I, as somebody, as Vicki said, I kind of thought they were going to be here tonight, but we couldn't throw that out.
In response to your comment about Miranda going back like about six months of referrals.
Two years.
No, well, I don't know, it could be, but I do know, in talking with the former council clerk, she was not even aware that there was to be the referrals put on an open project list, and, I mean, you know, she started in October, so you might have a little, I just know that for a fact as far as our former, before you, I don't know the others if they were doing, but.
I'll do some research.
Thank you.
Mr. Stucker, good evening.
Good evening.
Well, there he is.
Phil Stucker, 205 North Spring Street. In discussion with the feral cats, my wife and I have discussed this a lot. We have a lot of cats roaming in our neighborhood. They're not necessarily feral cats, they are pets of neighbors, but it's sad to see when one of them crosses the street and gets hit by a vehicle, but it happens. One of the things that I've seen in, in other communities is, well, specifically one community that they do trap the cats and neuter and spay the cats to help control the population of them, and I was wondering if, if this could be done here, if there couldn't be a voluntary, voluntary committee set up to handle this, inspecting the traps, setting the traps, inspecting them, retrieving the animals, and taking them to the veterinarians, as long as there's veterinarians that are willing to donate their, their time and effort to.
Yep, and I know the two of them are, they said they would, they would do it at cost, which was like right at $45, so we would have to budget, kind of like we do the indigent burials type thing, you know, but, yeah, I, I think that we use volunteers for plenty of other things, I sure don't know why that wouldn't work.
I think if we use the volunteer aspect, then you would eliminate the, I'm going to bring my cat in, that's, I found.
Right, yeah, yeah. Almost like creating a, a group or a board or whatever word you want to use to call it, that ensures that it's actually.
Cat squad, I'm sorry.
The cat squad.
Cat squad, yeah.
Make sure that it's being done properly, yeah, I agree, so, thanks, Bill.
All right, any other public participation? Seeing none, we will adjourn Health and Safety at 6:28 PM.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, September 7th, 2023.
All right, let's call Public Lands and Buildings to order at 6:29. Kevin Myers, Brenton Potter, and myself as interim chair, since Ciaran Sherrick is not here tonight. Any public participation from Public Lands and Buildings, or Public Lands, yeah, Public Lands and Buildings? None, so we will move on to the approval for the minutes from August 24th, 2023, the regular Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting. Do you have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll move to approve. Second.
Brenton was, made the motion, and Kevin, second, all in, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Airport projects, I think that's just put in there, that's coming up in a couple weeks or something, right?
Yeah, he said they weren't ready to talk about it yet tonight.
It'll be, he said October to me before you left tonight.
Okay, and I guess we're not talking about establishing a volunteer parks board.
He said that it's also.
Okay, and so then, open projects, but before we get to open projects, I'd like to bring, I guess, everybody in the community up on, you know, one of my pet projects, I guess, is the Pines Reservoir. I spoke with, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, and I wasn't ignoring you the other night, but I tried to get everybody, but anyway, Joe, Joe Leslie, Joe Leslie from the Conservation West.
Western Conservatory.
Yeah, West.
Conservation.
Creek Conservatory, yeah. So I spoke with him, I've been in contact with him, and Mr. Ray.
Ray Tedoff.
Ray Tedoff, he's been very, he's been keeping me in line, and I ask him to do that, so. So I got with Joe, and Joe's trying to move forward, we, he says there's some grant money to get this started, basically, and I know I'm kind of rambling here, but basically, I guess the, my idea, but I don't know, and we can discuss this in council and within and we can discuss this in council and within the community, I guess, is that if we can, basically, we would donate this property to West Creek Conservatory with the intention that when they get it remediated or whatever, then they would turn it over to the Park District. That way, the property would be in the hands of the pub, or, you know, would be available to the public for eternity, I guess. Where the other option was selling it, you know, to someone privately, and we would get a little cash, but it wouldn't be available to the public, so. Over the years, my, what I've gotten from people is they would rather see it in the public's hands than have that little bit of money, so. So I'm trying to do that, so hopefully we'll get some more information on that. He was going to talk to his, that was Tuesday, so Wednesday he was going to talk to his, what is it? Someone over him about it, and then he had got a call into Josh at the Park District. So hopefully, you know, we could have a new 100-acre natural resource area for Bussaris if that happens, at no cost to us, so. So that's kind of what we're moving towards. I guess if anyone has any comments on that or has any ideas, you know, please let us know.
Questions now, or do you want me to wait till he comes in?
No, you can, I mean, you can ask me now, but I don't know.
In case you chat.
I don't know if he's actually coming in because we're kind of on a pretty tight, tight, tight timeline.
The two questions I have, would that whole process work if we didn't, if we retained ownership in the end and leased it to the Park District for a very, you know, you can do like they do, the land that the hospital sits on, the city owns, and lease it for 99 years for a dollar.
Yeah.
That way, we retain our, our interest in the value of the land.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't have an answer to that.
That's my, my main question, and that's it for now, I think.
Yeah, but my only concern was, you know, we've been going through this for several years, and we're getting down to the point where, you know, if something isn't done.
Then nothing can be done.
We don't know what's going to happen in the future, you know. So, yeah, so hopefully, next, next time I talk to him, maybe, he said he would get back with me, but hopefully, next time I'll have some more information, but I wanted to let everybody know that in for transpires, transparency issues and all that, so. Okay, so other than that, any other open projects before I go through this list a little bit? So that's, that was the first one on here, Pines Reservoir, so. Uh, looks like we've been working on that since 2017, and then I think we sold Lot, did we sell Lot 3? I can't keep, I can't keep track of the lot numbers, is the problem.
That's the one behind Crazy Fox.
Crazy Fox, okay, we didn't sell that, so. But we're not doing, we repaired it, yeah, that was the last thing we, so I don't think we need that on the open projects, no.
I agree, that could come off.
So we take that, Lot 3 off open projects, budgeting for sidewalks, I don't think we have money to budget for sidewalks in the near future. I think we should take that off. Do we agree?
Well, it says that there's already a line item in the 2021 budget, whether that's funded or not doesn't matter, but it's there if we ever do find funding, so yeah, I think, I think we did our job.
All right, parking in city lots, I don't think anything's ever going to be done with that, so I've tried. And I think that goes along with what's on the next page, is like dumpsters and stuff, but that's in there too. So I think we should take parking in city lots off. That's an administrative issue if they want to. It's two-hour parking, it's in the ordinance. If they want to enforce it, that's fine, but apparently they're not, so. Property at 214 East Perry, we're still working on that. Is that true?
That's the one behind Kroger, correct?
Correct.
That's, that's being dealt with, though, through the grant with the land bank, so.
That's kind of still in the.
I would keep it on, just.
Yeah, keep that on. Mary Street Bridge, I think we repaired that, or whatever the deal was on that, and they were down there for a couple of weeks. We, I think I brought that up, solar energy project in, at the, in the old Crowder Road property, but I kind of turned that over to the administration, so if they want to do something with that, they can. I would take that off the. The tower lease, I'm not sure, do you know anything about that, that, are we, is that still up in the air? Tower space on the, or space on the towers?
Yeah, so we still get emails and questions about, you know, renting space, and then we're back sort of at the issue that got brought up by Mr. Fankhauser. Do we have to go out to public bid on those, or are those leases that fall outside that? And so there's still interest in leasing additional space and those types of stuff.
Okay, well, let's leave the tower lease on the, on the list here. We, I think we fixed the bulk water filling station issue.
Um, I would leave that on because we had discussed with the line they're going to be running to Nevada, there's some interest in putting one out there, so I would leave that on just to see if we can continue that discussion.
Well, leave the bulk water on. Derelict properties, obviously, that's going to be forever.
Well, there were specific ones mentioned here, and they were all pretty much taken care of on this list.
Oh, if it's just these, yeah. I mean, there's other things in here, like property maintenance code and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can take that off, take that one off, the derelict properties one. ARPA's done as far, I mean, I think we've got some trickling money in or something. Ambulance building, the sale of the ambulance building, that's still not.
So you want to remove the ARPA line?
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
There's still money in that fund that hasn't been spent yet.
Right.
Do we leave it until that is absolved?
Permission to get quotes on ARPA funds used for parks.
I guess that was just for parks, so yeah, that could come off.
I mean, if it's available, they're probably have, you know, they're going to use it for new guns for the police department, then it's going to have to be something different.
Yeah.
Yeah. The ambulance building, we haven't sold the building down on Sandusky and Plymouth there, Plymouth Street Station. So that should probably stay on there. And dumpster ordinances, I don't think we're ever going to do anything with that, so we made a little progress, but I would take that off.
Would the, would the ordinances for dumpsters include the price that we charge for them?
Well, I think when I put this on, they were setting the dumpsters on the sidewalk.
I got you, okay.
Behind Crazy Fox there, and then we redid that parking lot in Crazy Fox, and they brought them back and set them in our new parking lot, but they have moved them over to the other parking lot, so I think we.
Gotcha.
Achieved what we wanted to do. Then we go down the list here with the newer ones from 2022. Wind turbines are done. WTP.
Heating system.
Oh, seating, yeah, we, we did all that, the, and the Shines Park, oh, Shrine, that's Shriners Park, or.
Yeah, should be Shrine.
The Shriners Park, isn't it? Yeah, that's done. Oh, property bid, yeah, we, that's done.
That's done.
I bought that.
Yep.
Lions Field Splash Pad is done, Splash.
They did, well, they did a grant for that, and they didn't get it. I would say leave that on to allow them to continue. I don't mean to cut you off, can we go back to the Shine Park? It says Crowder Road.
Shiner's.
Yeah, that's the Shines.
Shiner's.
Shriners, it was just a typo. Oh, okay, okay.
It's the Shriners.
Eight acres we own on Crowder Road. Okay.
That's the one I, I talked about, could we get a solar farm out there, and I don't know what ever happened with that. I kind of turned it over to the administration, and I haven't heard any more, so.
I'd suggest leaving the Lions Field Splash Pad.
All right.
That allows them to continue to seek grants to try to make that happen.
Are you getting all this?
I'm giving her my notes, too.
Oh, you're, okay.
She's recording.
Oh, she's recording, too. Uh, Splash Pad app, I guess that was for, in property bids, I guess that was.
Those can both go.
Those can go. Nevada Waterline Project, I mean, that's in.
Still being dealt with.
It's still going on, but I don't know what property bid repeat.
It was, legislation was already passed in June of '22, I'd say it can come off.
All right, we'll take that one. Ooh, now we're down to the last page. Civil Service looking for more space. I don't know if they ever got more space or not, but.
No.
And I guess we'll leave that on there. And city property, two parcels of land, lease the property to CIC for $1,000 a month, Verizon. Oh, that was the ones behind the, what did we determine on that, behind, the property behind the tower?
Uh, I think that it was just sort of table.
Okay, I guess we'll leave that on there.
I think it goes into the entire discussion of tower leases and leasing land and utilizing CIC. You know, if that's something the council wanted to do.
Okay, I guess we'll leave that, and that completes the public lands and buildings, open projects. Now, any public participation on any of that? With none, I will move on to adjourning at.
6:42.
6:42.
Plating Committee, September 7th, 2023.
Okay, I will call plating to order at 6:43. Members present, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair. Any public participation? Okay, none being, you have before you the August 24th regular plating committee meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Kevin made the motion to approve, Dan seconded it. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. All right, we have the open projects list. I'll just rattle off right down. If you have any questions, step up, maybe just speak up. First one on the list is the Chapter 1189, the codified ordinance on the parking and pavement. We have that, it was referring to size of, the ordinance calls for, for every 75 square feet of space, you have to have a parking spot for the establishment, and it was saying, suggesting to go to 100, every 150 square foot of space for parking. But we have it as a, it goes to the BZA as like what did, uh, darn it, just went blank on the pizza.
Tim Hortons did that.
Well, Tim Hortons did that through a BZA application, and also.
Little Caesars?
No.
Place went into lawsuits.
Yeah.
Geoninos.
Geoninos, they got that where they don't have to increase their space. So it's working well going through the BZA by their application, and I think we can go ahead and close that one. The required parking spaces for downtown business. We didn't get anything from the, uh, you know, for the, they were consulted with Manic and Smith, but it was put on hold.
That's been eight and a half years, yeah.
Yeah, I say we go ahead and close that. The Cyrus Mobile Home Village, where they were requesting renting out lots to campers.
Place is gone.
Yeah, and that's gone, so close that one. This goes to the law director, and this was your predecessor, so process for condemnation of derelict buildings, and you've been working on something with that. We'll leave that one open because he is still working with our derelict buildings and, you know, delinquent properties. Also brought up in the public lands was the tower construction in the general business or general industry districts, which kind of complies with what, kind of goes hand in hand with what he's talking about for public lands, but this is for private, more like in the private area.
And that's more constructing them instead of leasing off.
Correct.
Space we already have. Or the homes we already have.
It was referred to the planning commission, and it's been tabled by them.
Since 2018.
Yeah, and they have, and they haven't done anything with it.
You can refer it again if they want to, is my.
Yeah, we can close that.
Did you close the one above that?
No, I'm leaving that one open because he's already doing other items. Also, the codified ordinance 1131.12 for fire protection. It was referred by the service safety director, and we were, proposed legislation for six-inch fire hydrant water lines. It was pulled, and it's been pretty much tabled, it hasn't been discussed since 2019. What's your opinion to be?
I would take it off.
Take it off.
Six-inch water line doesn't give you very much pressure.
Nope, that's fine. The lot between Wendy's and Clady's, which the city owns, the property behind Walmart, behind Wendy's and Clady's.
They took care of that.
And that's been, we'll close that. The temporary signs, that hasn't been finalized, the last time it was discussed is in 2020. That is for temporary signs as in campaign signs or other types of signs.
We buy your diabetic supplies and clean your house as signs?
That's what I said, it applies to all signs. You, would you like to keep that in there and try to get some more information on?
It's not resolved, so.
I think it should, we should.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll keep that one. And as was stated with public lands, was the sidewalk installation and repair. I mean, we can leave that open, and, you know, like you said, we're, you're going to keep that as a line item in the budget, is a line item, but it's not funded.
I, I suggest you leave that one open, and one of the things that we talked about was trying to get a safer route to walk out, Mansfield Street to Walmart. I know with our incoming mayor, that's been one of his projects he wanted to see through, and I have a feeling we're going to be addressing that next year.
That's fine. I figured that, that's why I didn't cross that one off. Former law director, well, yeah, was a former law director wanting the floodplain ordinance. Are you interested in looking into that?
There's already a lot of.
It says modernization of floodplain ordinance.
FEMA already has a ton of regulations on what we can and cannot do.
Yeah, we updated that a few years ago.
Three?
I would say you could take that off.
Okay.
There's very little that.
All right.
The federal government has already highly regulated that area.
Yeah, I figured, but I just, it was on the list. This one, I don't remember, the possible annexation of property owner at 1862 through 68.
We did that, that was completed.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember that one.
Did we annex them?
We did.
Oh.
Yeah, that was on Sandusky, on North Route 4.
Oh, North.
Yes.
I haven't figured south, that's far.
On page two, the only three I see to keep is the zoning for the bed and breakfast or Airbnb rentals. Housing issue, which is repeated twice, so that's an ongoing issue. And the Morton Lynn Layer sewer, which is an open project. The shipping container has been taken care of. And the Mill and Pave, why don't, why is that still on there? Because it was already.
So that Morton Lynn Layer is being transferred from the county to the city.
Right, but it was.
And then they're also going to try to run a sewer line out.
Right, that's why they said, it was referred in July 31st of this.
Oh.
That's why I said we'll leave that on because they're talking about.
Yeah, they referred it, and they are not ready to talk about it yet.
Gotcha, yeah, no, it's an active project.
It's an open project.
Yep, and the building permit notification protocol that I say we close because if somebody needs to know something, it's public record and they can request a.
It's all public.
It's public record, they can request any information on that, so. I will hand you my copy so you can update it. Is there any public participation?
Becky Deshaun, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. This has to do with the three-year mill and pave plan. In light of the fact that a number of streets originally listed on the three-year mill and pave plan were not done in 2023, I asked Mayor Reiser at the September 5th 23 council meeting if there were any streets done in 2023 that were not on the three-year mill and pave plan. He said he would, he said he would have an answer for me at Thursday's meeting. Since he's not here, did he give any of you his answer?
No.
We didn't know he wasn't going to secure.
Thank you very much.
Your ball. If there's no other public participation, I will adjourn plating at 6:53 PM. Okay.
Economic Development Committee, September 7th, 2023.
All right, I'll call Economic Development to order at 6:54 PM. Members present, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. Ciara and Sherri absent. First off, is there any public participation for Economic Development? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the August 24th, 2023.
I'll make a motion.
Got a first from Mark and a second from Mr. Young. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we'll move on to the open projects, which the list on here is pretty small. I think we need to keep all the annexation stuff. Unless you guys don't agree with that, but I think, yeah. The only real stuff I saw that I felt needed to be taken off was the, on the second page, the Local Board of Tax Review. I think we already took care of all that. And then the Busiris Income Tax Rebates, which is right underneath of that. Do you guys see anything else that you'd like to take off of there? Most of it's annexation.
That looks good.
I agree.
Okay, I'll get you that list. Other than that, if there's any public participation for us now, entertain that. If not, we'll adjourn at 6:56.
Committee, September 7th, 2023.
I'll call the Finance Committee to order at? 6:57. Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, myself, Chair. Is there any public participation for Finance Committee tonight? Not seeing, or seeing none. Approval of the minutes for August 24th, 2023, the regular Finance Committee meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Kevin makes the motion and Terry second. All in favor?
Aye.
Airport projects, I guess we're talking about that at a later date. And also establishing a volunteer parks board, we're talking. And legacy fund too, I guess we're putting that, talking. Material and supplies for the Police Department, that might be in here.
It is.
All right.
That's this one.
Candy left you guys with all of those, and then she also included in their descriptions of, of why those are being referred as appropriations.
Okay, well, let me read this. So it's on the record. Regarding appropriations, this is from Callie. For a little explanation, the $4,500 is from a check we received from GovDeals for the sale of two more police cars. The $13,248.75 is also from a check that was given as a reimbursement for body armor that was purchased. We are just using the check to reimburse the crime and detection line the purchase was originally made from. And regarding the fund creation, we create these victim advocate funds yearly, which we do. We are not, not putting money in the fund, only creating it. So when the money for 2024 comes in for the victims' advocate, we are prepared. So we get money from, just so everyone, I mean, everybody here might know, but we get money from the victims, from the, I guess it's state, isn't it, state?
Yeah.
And then, and then that, that pays our victims' advocate. So, sort of, so that it's really, it's just kind of... We just run the money through us, through the, through the city. So then, I guess materials and supplies for the Police Department.
So that would be this one.
Appropriations to materials and supplies for the construction of a wall in the Police Department. 101 Program 7, General Government. That's the $4,500, right?
Yep, into materials and supplies.
So I guess I need a motion.
I will make a motion requesting emergency legislation authorizing the appropriation of $4,500 into Program 101, Fund 770, Line 24.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is appropriations for the reimbursement of funds used to purchase body armor, which is the $13,248.75. Spoke up before.
I'll make a motion requesting emergency legislation authorizing the appropriation of $13,248.75 to Program 101, or to Program 1, Fund 7110, Line Item 25.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, I guess we'll need legislation to create the fund creation for the Ohio Crimes Victims Assistant, wait, is that what it is? Ohio Crimes Victims Assistant. Assist, I don't know. Anyway, 281... What is that?
I'll make a, a motion requesting emergency legislation that authorizes the auditor to create Fund 281, which is the 2024 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Fund, and Fund 282, which is the 2024 Victims of Crime Act Fund.
Question, do we have that emergency?
I don't know. I don't know when, I don't know when the money normally comes. When's the money normally come, right?
2024. I think we get it late in 2023, too.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll second.
I'll second that as an emergency.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's the money part of it. Take care. So we got materials by body, that's that. Well, then we got Service Safety Director wages, which, you know, we are not going to talk about.
The mayor had to talk to him about that soon. He says that he plans to speak on that at the next committee meeting.
Okay, well, he's got a lot to say. That's all I can say. No. I, okay, that's fine. So then, we're gonna go to open projects. So I've got my list here. I guess the first one is, well, we're back on that. Well, that kind of is a revolving door. The indigent burials aren't, was still up in the air. So. The first one here, we'll keep Economic Development. That's another one that's always up in the air. So I guess we'll keep that. Rates and fees charged, this is from 2000, originally from 2015, but...
That is for, thank you for those violations on anything too, in that chart, not just rates for factories or stuff violating their permit. So I think it, I think it stays there.
Okay. Manpower Supervise Committee discussed removing city engineer from manpower. I thought we did that.
We did. I'm guessing that one was already removed because that's all been completed.
And the countywide tourism, they were talking about that, and then they weren't talking about that. I don't think they're doing anything on that, so.
The Chamber took over the Tourism Bureau two years ago.
But they were talking about doing like a countywide. That's when...
Yeah.
What's his name's wife was in there. The Law Director's wife was, I don't know what that was on. Anyway, that's a whole nother story. Landlord tenant water deposits. We've talked about that. We haven't talked about that. So I don't know what, where we want to move it.
If we want to talk about it again, we can refer it again.
I, that's what I'm thinking too. So I haven't, I mean, it's not, you know, that's one of those things. Doesn't seem fair, but what's the, what's, I don't know what the solution is. Ambulance service, I think since we took over ambulance, we're kind of...
I would leave it in because of what was going with Todd Township, where we have temporarily contracted with them, and then they're going to come into the district. So that'll need addressed when that happens.
Okay, and we did not sell parking, parking lot three. Since I figured out which one three was.
That can go.
Budgeting money for sidewalk repair. I don't think we need to budget it. And the other one, it was talking about grants.
There's already a line item there, so.
Took it out.
Our job was done.
Solid waste rates. Did we ever, did we, did we raise those this year or what?
We did. I think last year, I think we did.
Is it last year?
Yeah.
So that's probably done.
Part of the Arcadis Plan, that's the rebase those.
Not the solid, solid waste is trash.
But there was some conversation about the landfill rates though recently.
This is probably under the, under the old one though.
Yeah, I think that's the old one. Let them, if they're gonna raise them, let them bring it up again. I, I say.
That's in 2018, so.
Fire Department Staffing, you're saying, say, keep that for the safer grants. And water line expansion, that's continuing. I hope that continues forever.
Yep.
That we, you know, I'd like to send water to Boston. I don't know.
That'd be a little hard.
Oh, okay. Did we have a question out there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the water line expansion outside the city, did you say you're gonna leave that?
Yeah. Yeah, because we're, every time we turn around, we're, somebody else is wanting water, which is great, you know.
Yes. Have you looked over to the right of that? Because it talks about legislation requested authorizing administration to seek permit from Ohio EPA. Resolution 212, 218 was passed on February the 20th. I mean, I think we need to look at what's also over here to the right, because that can be taken off.
Oh, some of that can, yeah. That's just like a continuing, a history of it.
Well, I... Okay, I mean, I'm just thinking if you say leave in the water line expansion outside city, I'm taking that as you're saying, leave that there. You didn't say, but there's items to the left that you don't need to keep. Mark those off.
True, true, but, you know, like they said, that's a history of it, but, yeah, either way, I, I, I'm not...
But if you're removing items on here, okay.
Just basically what we're doing is, it's in committee, you know? And, and you've brought that up, that, hey, this isn't in committee. So we're either leaving it in the committee so we can discuss it at committee meetings or not. So this, by leaving water line expansion outside city in committee, we can discuss it at any time. So. That's kind of what all this is about. But, and we're still, 214 East Perry, we're still talking about. We decided in another one. And this was just, well, this is old, but I think it's came up again withholding a Bratwurst Festival fee, right? That's still, we're still discussing that, I believe.
But remember, this is what happens when the committees aren't looking at their open projects and updating them. You know, we're sitting here and we're waiting how many years later to look at it. Yes, you have on here, on April the 17th, 2018. The withholding of Bratwurst Festival fee was put on the open project list. The next date says 4/17, 2018. That's what it was reported out at council. And it was reported out that it was referred. Well, it says, yeah, referred by council. But if you'll remember, no fee agreement has been located. Well, at the August 22nd council meeting, interim law director Gerner requested that the permanent Bratwurst Festival agreement be referred to both the Service and Health and Safety Committees. At that time, on August the 24th, I informed both the committees, both Service and Health, that research shows that the Health and Safety Committee handles the festival street closures, and the Finance Committee handles the charging or waiving of fees. So it was agreed on August the 24th that this matter needs to be referred to the Finance Committee. That referral was not done at September 5th council meeting. Now I know you're probably gonna come back and say, what I had to say is moot because it's already on here. Yes, it's on here under Finance, but then you have a meeting where the interim law director says it goes to Service and Health and Safety. I mean, obviously, we're not quite sure as committee members or council members what committees certain projects are to go to.
The good news is, if you look at Resolution 218, 2021, City Council has already authorized and directed the Service Safety Director to do this agreement. So he already has the authority and has been told by City Council to do it. So it doesn't need to be in any project or be reapproved because he's already supposed to have done it. And so that's what we're putting together a retroactive agreement to fix the error from three or four years ago.
So then, are we gonna talk about it tonight? If you're saying, hey, it's already in Finance, are we gonna talk about?
Yeah, what do you want to talk about?
The Bratwurst Festival Agreement?
We can talk about it.
Okay, you're ready to talk about it?
Um, that's what committee meetings are for, to talk about this stuff.
Do you want to wait till after you're done with your open project list?
No, let's talk about it. We'll, we'll put a pause right here. Put a little star. No, that's what open, that's what the committee, the work should be done. And, you know, this is another one to, I know the public out there, if anybody's watching, there's two or three people out there watching.
There's more than two or three people watching if you...
Okay, but this is where the work gets done, is at the committee meetings. This is where you want to come, if you've got a problem out there, and you want to come and you want to talk about things. This is, I mean, obviously, you can come at the, at the council meetings, but kind of everything's in order, and you know that, because as, as the law clerk, you get everything in order for the council meetings, and then we finalize it at the council meetings. But in the committee meetings is when, when we discuss things and try to hash things out and see what we want to move to legislation. So I guess for everyone out there, if you have an issue, it's, it's, I suggest come to the committee meetings, and then we can hash it out. So, so what do we have on that?
Okay, on the Bratwurst Festival Agreement, before we talk about that, I would like to make the statement. On, and remember, the Bratwurst Festival Agreement is where the city, it's a permanent agreement, where the city is saying they are not going to charge the Bratwurst Festival for cleanup or safety forces. However, if at any time the city decides they're going to make a change, they need to give the Bratwurst Festival a one-year notice that a change is going to occur. Okay, and of course, the reason that we're not charging is because, you know, we're being told that the Bratwurst Festival, you know, their funds are such that they need the city's help. On August the 3rd, I sent an email to the attorney for the Bratwurst Festival requesting copies of the festival's 990 EZ tax returns for years 2022, 2021, and 2020. On August the 30th, I sent another email to the festival's attorney inquiring on the status of my request. I received a reply from the festival's attorney on August the 30th, 23, stating, "I am still pondering your request." The Bratwurst Festival Inc. is a 501(c)(4) and files a Form 990 EZ entitled, "Short Form Return of Organization Exempt from Income Tax." On the top right corner of this form, it states, "Open to Public Inspection." of Organization Exempt from Income Tax. On the top right corner of this form, it states, Open to Public Inspection. A review of the IRS two thousand twenty two instructions for this form states that a tax-exempt organization must fulfill a request for a copy of the organization's annual information return, which would be the nine ninety EZ. In light of the above, I'm not sure what the festival's attorney has to ponder. However, with the assistance of a nonprofit explorer, I have secured copies of the festival's nine ninety EZ forms for years two thousand four through two thousand twenty one. As an upcoming council at large representative for the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five council, I will be strongly encouraging the council members to review the tax-exempt returns as they consider whether or not to provide cleanup and safety forces to the festival at no charge. Okay, with that being said, do you have a copy in front of you of the resolution, um, two eighteen, two thousand twenty one? How, how are you going to be, um, cuz that's what you talked about, you were going to amend a resolution?
No, I'm going to put the agreement that was ordered to be put together, together.
Okay, so in this agreement, um, have you done anything yet?
I have not done the agreement yet, no.
Okay, um, is it possible to ask when you do, well, I guess I'll just wait until you do the agreement and you present it to council, because I have some things that I feel needs to be in that agreement, just as a paper trail purpose, you know, several whereas clauses. Would you like to hear what my suggestions are, or would you like to wait until you have prepared your agreement and then?
No, go ahead.
Um, I'm suggesting that one of the whereas clause states, resolution two eighteen, twenty one, authorizing the entering into the permanent agreement was passed on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty one. Another whereas clause was discovered in two thousand twenty three that no such permanent agreement had been prepared and signed by the city and the Bratwurst Festival Inc., and then a third whereas, the agreement is now being prepared and signed. So, just again, as a paper trail, so it explains why an agreement was authorized in twenty one, and we're just now getting around to
Right.
taking care of it, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, well, on that, I just, and, and no offense, I know you're involved in the, in the Bratwurst Festival, Kevin, and that's not, nothing against, this is before you, this is, I, I don't even know if you were involved in it then, but I mean, way back when, before we even, when they were still paying part of it, we, and I was on council, probably two thousand twelve or thirteen, I don't know, anyway, we would ask them how, you know, to look at, see what they made, and they said, well, we only have like nine dollars in our account, in our checking account. Okay, so that's kind of what we went on for years. I didn't think it was right, but, but, uh, I was only one person, so. So, I, I don't know, uh, what's right, what's wrong. I agree with what the mayor says, that, you know, it does, it promotes the community, but yet, we are in dire straits too, so. It's something that probably, I guess, the next council will have to, have to decide, because it's probably too late for this council, uh, so. We're all done with that. We'll move on to line item, back to the, uh, open projects, line items for US flags. Don't look like we're ever getting anything done on that, so I would just cross that out. And tree program funding, I don't think we have anything on that.
I think that's all.
Yeah, I think that's. Business income tax rebates.
You can take that off.
Okay.
They have to, uh, apply for an income tax rebate, like for new businesses.
Oh, okay.
Do the CRA stuff.
I know the UV system for the wastewater, Terry did that.
Yep.
It's not long ago, that's how old that is.
I gotta start.
Oh, okay. Airport projects, obviously, we're still working.
It says twenty twenty airport projects.
Yeah, I guess we could, we could update that to just, can we update that to just?
They just re-referred.
Was that on?
They just re-referred, so this one can come off.
That one can come off, and do we have the old ones on there, or the other one on there?
Yeah, it was right up here on the top of your list tonight that we didn't.
Yeah, I know it was, but, yeah, I.
Well, it's not gonna be on this list.
Oh, okay. We'll make sure that's on there. We'll take this one off, and garbage truck, I guess we got a garbage truck, got plenty of them. City hall generator, I remember that, uh, ambulance lease contract. I think that was when we were.
That was for the building.
Oh, well, we're not leasing it to anyone, so, yeah. CARES Act, COVID reimbursement, I don't know, it's all that done?
Says the deadline to spend this money was twelve thirty one of twenty one.
We must, we must.
So that's gone.
We must have spent that, so, and I, and I'm, I never did understand this one, I think I was, council meeting packets in minutes. I don't know how that got on finance, but I don't even know what was. I remember talking about it, but does anyone remember what that was? Let's take that off, since we don't know, and, uh, council treasurer salaries, we always talk about that, but we take that off. And the bed tax agreement, that was for the two thousand twenty one. So that's definitely off. We'll get this down here. Page three.
Well, the bed tax agreement, that's something we have to do every year.
Every year, so it's a, it gets re-referring every year, yeah. ARPA, uh, and the two thousand twenty two millon page's done, and ARPA two thousand twenty two splash pad, under, under, we talked about all that, but I think we're pretty much, we put that other money back in, uh, just, just set it back, didn't we? We were gonna use that money for splash pad, which, uh, we ended up not using, because.
It's still sitting in a fund.
It's still in a fund, but I guess we should just keep the ARPA fund open. I would say, cuz there's money in there, and we'll leave that as a, as an open project, just ARPA, but, uh, and then, uh, these are all, stormwater fee for two thousand twenty two. I'm not sure what the, I, that kind of payments to CCEDP, that kind of goes along with the, the first one there with economic development.
I think it can come off, cuz the contract was signed.
Yeah. I think that whole.
The whole section.
That whole section can come off. Tax credit reduction, discussion was held about tax credit reduction for those who work outside the city, and will be held for seven, two thousand twenty two. Is that something we wanna leave on there? I'm sure it's gonna come up again.
Refer it again.
Let them refer it again, okay, we're done with that. Off weight reservoir, that was the, that walking path, amend departure, that was just kind of the water, Warren Street sewer, I believe we got that done. OPWC, and that's at CMT Airport, that was from two thousand twenty two. Then we get, these are just kind of.
I think the whole rest of that list is done.
I think that all of that's done, yeah, and then, this is the more recent stuff that, and mostly, it's just appropriation sewer rates. I think we talked about, are we, are we sort of?
Leave that on.
Still in on.
Leave that on.
Yeah, with the sewer rates. And we just putting the, we're really not done with it, but the bulletproof glass drywall, we just passed the legis-, or we just sending the legislation.
Well, that was, that was a different one, that's when we wanted to do that with the ARPA money.
Oh, okay.
So, this whole rest of this list, other than the Morton in there, and firearms for police equipment, the twenty three OPWC project, you even wanna keep?
And the Dudley Street.
Dudley Street.
So the la-, the last four on that list, you wanna keep?
Oh, the last four? Oh, okay, that is. So this, we don't need the bulletproof glass, we're not talking about our salary, cuz we can't, or I mean, it's not our salary, but anyway, so, everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I think after the elected official salary, the rest of that I would leave on there, cuz that's all stuff that was referred this, this year.
Yeah, the last four.
Well, no, this whole, from the Stetzer water line down.
Yeah, that's right. I, I would take everything elected officials up off, except for the sewer.
Well, everything from twenty twenty three, except the elected officials.
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep that open.
So Stetzer water line to the bottom, keep it off.
All right, that sounds good. I'll give that to her. All right, any more public participation for finance? Oh, there we go.
Hi, I'm Greg White, I live at eleven twenty five Hill Crest Drive. Should've brought it up during service committee, but I'm gonna bring it up to finance, because you brought up the Warren Street water project, okay? I was waiting for that. Reason why, have you guys been out there on Warren Street and actually looked at the project?
The sewer project?
Yeah, it's terrible. No gutters, no fixing them, nothing. It is like a, it's like a walking hazard out there along the berm of those people's front of their buildings, other properties. There's, there's no curbs or gutters, nothing. There's chunks of concrete just sitting alongside people's property. I mean, and I, also, because I went to the dentist the other day, and this is how I found this out.
Oh, over by, it's over?
West Warren.
West Warren, okay.
It looks terrible out there, okay, and I guess two property owners have now had to have somebody dig the street up already, and fix their sewer lines going into the sewer project for some unreason, or whatever, but you guys oughta go out, take a look at that. That is, I mean, if you can spend money, research, grinding and repaving streets that were not on the twenty three project, that money should've went and actually did a better job of that project. I'm seriously. My God, you get out of your car and you just trip right over into people's, in people's yards. There's no curbs, no gutters, no nothing. Why?
What block, what block is that?
Uh, would be, be from Spring Street, uh, west. Okay, would be from Spring Street Road. That is terrible. I mean, I mean, my God, if you're an older person or whatever, and fall out of the car, whatever, I mean, there's just huge, I should've took some pictures for you, but there's actually in front, just on the other side of the, the dump place. There's, there's huge chunks of just freaking concrete, and there's no curbs, no gutters, no nothing. And I just saw where the one guy had to, actually, they had to dig up the street to fix his sewer, because something must've happened. But, I mean, to me, if you're gonna do a job, okay, do it right. Make it look nice, okay? I mean, I mean, some of these other streets, they got brand-new curbs and gutters and stuff like that, but if you're gonna do a project, and you're gonna, finance committee's gonna finance it, then let's make sure the jobs are doing right. I don't know if the punch list is done yet, trust me, I don't.
I wouldn't say it's not, if that stuff's still around.
Oh, you gotta go look at it.
You go down on, on East Warren's the same way.
Yeah, they got.
They got the curbs open and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, winter's coming.
I, I don't know that.
You know, but I mean, when you can actually deviate from the actual projects.
I don't know.
Okay, and do other people's streets for some unreason, that they weren't even on the list, okay, and, but then you can't, then you can't even fix the ones that were on the project list, that's an issue, that I believe that is a serious issue.
Did you get that question answered? Was there streets that were done that weren't on the list?
Yeah.
Cuz we haven't got that answer yet.
Yeah, there was.
So, so.
It won't come publicly out, I don't ever think, but there was streets that were done.
So not, not to make an excuse for council, but, you know.
I'm not making any excuses for council at all, I'm just saying, bringing it to you guys' attention as finance committee.
No, no. Right, right, and maybe.
If, if we're, if we're budgeting money for.
Exactly.
Improvement, then let's do it like, do it right, just like Plymouth Street. It was done right, new curbs, gutters, new everything, new sewer project, everything.
So, so several years ago, I don't know if you, you remember, we did Southern Avenue, and it took, it was supposed to be done before winter, and it wasn't.
Took over eighteen months to do that.
Yeah, anyway, when it got done, uh, there were puddles, and there still is puddles.
Puddles out there.
That in the wintertime become ice puddles, and I, and when that got done, I mentioned it to the administration, and that, that should've been corrected. Uh, so, I don't know how council, and it's something that maybe next council can look at. Uh, how do you put into the legislation that, that these things meet? You know, I mean, we give them, we give them the money, and then they're supposed to be responsible for getting a good job done. Now, how do we make sure they get a good job done, you know? I don't know, maybe somebody can figure that out. I would like, I would like to know.
Well, I mean, that's, that's.
Don't give them the money, but we have to give them the money before.
You gotta look at it this way, each one of those contracts, there's a bid bond on it, okay? By law, there has to be a bid bond, okay? So, if we're not, if council, administration, or whoever is doing and going out and checking these issues, why aren't we going against those bid bonds, okay, to make them go back in and do the project right? I mean, that's common sense. If I hire a contractor, if I hire a contractor, company's out at my house, guess what? He's gonna get X amount of dollars down, but if the job's not done right, I'm not gonna pay him until it's done.
It take eighteen months to get the swimming pool repaired, when it was supposed to be, because.
This goes to, we no longer have a city engineer.
Right, right, we don't have anybody going out there looking at that stuff.
We have nobody to actually go on out and inspect. All we're relying on is the service director, correct, Terry? Okay, going out with this punch list, okay? I'm learning, trust me.
I would say it's more Jeff Dunn than the service director.
But what I'm saying is, the punch lists are not being looked at correctly. They're not going out and inspecting.
They may not be being created upon.
There's no one who's, who's.
That's my point.
That's what I'm saying. Council is responsible to make sure that they're paying these bills, they should be responsible in making sure someone is.
That's an administrative function. We're responsible to put the mighty workers to go.
But the thing is, is why isn't there like feedback to council saying, hey, this is not being done?
First time we've heard that on West Warren, though. That is in that shape, we haven't heard that before.
No, but this is not something new, in my opinion.
It's just not, I mean, it's.
I mean, you go out to some of the places they've done on punch lists, they waited two, three months after the project was done, and then the company said, we're done.
Greg's, he's a perfect example. He came up here because they were doing his street, and they were, weren't doing it right.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, you know, and before that, I spoke back on Southern Avenue, I spoke to the administration. You know, and I don't know what the answer is, you know, I'm asking, you know, I'll do whatever I can do, but all I can do is tell them, hey, this is not right. Ask them to fix it, or don't pay them before they fix it, but it's easier for them to just pay it, I guess.
Council just makes a resolution to saying that if this is not done, we don't, we hold back until there is a engineering.
Well, and, you know, maybe that's something.
To make sure stuff's done.
Is that something we need to put in legislation, a contingency, that, you know, we keep back ten percent until council approves it?
I thought it was already that way.
I don't know.
It should be.
It should be.
Should be, I don't know that they're.
Yeah, on bids, it's a minimum ten, but they also have a bid bond too, so you can actually, you need to look at what the bid bond says, how far back you can go off of that bid bond to make repairs. But I agree with you about West Southern, because basically, all that doing is that ice is freezing on that asphalt, and guess what's gonna happen to that asphalt? It's gonna deteriorate.
I've seen people go through that after a spray, and spray the people on, walking on the sidewalk, just drench them.
It wasn't engineered right.
Yeah, well, I mean, just put a little more pavement there when they, yeah, but.
Called leveling it out.
Yeah, yeah, but anyway, uh, yeah, I, I don't know what the answer is, but, you know, I'm kinda, at the end of my.
It's not council's job. We talked to administration about why it's not being done, but that's all.
Yeah, but what do we do when, what do you do when the administration is not doing their job, you know?
Yeah, isn't it said in councils?
Other than ask the public not to vote them back in.
I mean, I'm not being, I'm not being disrespectful.
Is request we hold the money back, that's all we do.
Yeah.
Until it's done, I would think.
But typically, we give them the money ahead of time, right? We give them the money.
We, we, we put it in a line item and appropriate it, yeah.
It's already done that way by the council.
If, and speaking to the next council, wherever you guys are, if you wanna figure out some way to probably have to talk to the law director about that, a contingency where the money's held until the council approves that, you know? I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but, you know, is that gonna detract on getting bids? You know, is, is a contractor not gonna bid, knowing that, okay, I have to wait till council decides it's, I get the money? So, you know, that's just something to think about.
Projects are not being done correctly.
Well, I agree. I've, that's, I've been, I've been up here since two thousand ten, they haven't been.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just, they're not being, no one is, there is no oversight on these projects.
I, I agree, and it's not something new, so, like I said, I've been here since two thousand ten.
We're paying millions of dollars to have these projects done, and guess what? We're not getting our bang for our money.
I agree.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so, any more public participation? If not, I'm going to adjourn here at, give me a time, uh, seven thirty five.